And I just want to mention that last week after the agenda was published, Commissioner Pace believed that he was going to be in Carlsbad, California. So a second public location was set up. But then he learned that this week that he'd be able to join us, which we're thankful for. And so another revision was sent out on the agenda cancelling the the second public location in Carlsbad. So we're just hosting the meeting here tonight. And with that, I call the meeting to order and I didn't ask anyone. But Commissioner Wedge, would you be willing to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and the State Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
And I'm sorry, I think I might have forgotten to call the meeting to order. If I did, I apologize. Secretary, could we please get a roll call?
Commissioners Jane.
Here.
Mohan is running a little bit behind here. Pace.
Present.
Wedge.
Present.
And Chair Morgan.
Present.
All right, we have a quorum.
Okay. Well, thank you. The next section here is regarding agenda amendments. And I do have one to propose regarding item five, which was continued from last week regarding the selection of Planning Commissioner Vice Chair. But before we get to that, I'd like to ask staff whether you have any amendments to the agenda.
No, staff does not have any agenda amendments. Thank you.
Okay. Well, as other commissioners know, planning vice chair, Jane had decided that he would like to resign his position as vice chair. And Commissioner Jane, is there anything else you'd like to say about that before we move on here?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Morgan. So we chose a vice chair last year. And at that time, one of the commissioners wasn't there and there was some confusion on my part on whether we can nominate someone who's not present. And I would not have certainly done without knowing the will of that person.
Okay.
So generally, I'm an able and willing member to serve this commission. But I would yield and that's the reason which I've decided to resign. Thank you.
And I would like to propose that we reorder this agenda so that we cover this topic, which is currently Agenda Item Five, after the meeting opened to the public, so that our new vice chair could then participate in that role throughout the meeting. And I'm asking whether there's any discussion or any concern about reordering the agenda there. And if not, I'd like to invite a motion to do so.
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. So the motion is to reorder the agendas so that item five is considered after the meeting opened to the public. And with that, could we please get a roll call vote?
All right. Commissioners Jane.
Aye.
Mohan.
Yes.
Aye.
Wedge.
Aye.
And Chair Morgan. Morgan.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously.
Okay. And do we need to do anything to reflect that Commissioner Vivek is here now? Do we? Okay, just by saying it, okay. So he's checked in. Okay. All right, with that, let's move to the consent calendar. And we have two items here today. One is actions of the zoning administrator. And secondly, is to approve the minutes. And since we don't have anybody in the audience today, any residents in the audience, I just open it up to ask whether there are any commissioners that would like to discuss either item.
Thanks, Chair Morgan. So I wasn't present, so I won't be participating in the minutes of meeting approval. And I actually have a property which falls within close proximity of two of the items on the zoning administrator actions. So I'll be refraining or abstaining from voting.
Okay.
Just letting you know. So, thank you.
Okay. And since, is there any other discussion about either of the items on the consent calendar?
I was absent at the last meeting as well.
Okay. So that leaves three people to vote, so we still have a quorum. And if there's no discussion, then the people that have recruited themselves are able to stay in the meeting, correct? For this part? Yeah. Yeah. Okay. All right, well, if there's no further discussion or points on this, I'd like to invite a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move.
Do we have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, the motion passes. The next section is meeting open to the public. But since we don't have anybody in the audience tonight, then we will just, we'll skip this item here. And with that, we can move to the selection of the vice chair, which we moved up to this section of the meeting. So I'd like to ask whether there are any nominations for vice chair for calendar year 2025.
I'll nominate Vivek Mohan, our Commissioner Vivek Mohan, for the position.
Okay, Commissioner Mohan, yeah. Do we have any other discussion or any other nominations? Or would anyone like to self nominate, for example?
I'm supportive of the motion. It, you know, just the practice over the last several years has been to put the, you know, the more experienced, the more tenured, I guess I should say, the more tenured participants into these roles. And so with Commissioner Mohan back and expressing an interest, I think, you know, keeping with the protocol makes a lot of sense, so I'm supportive of the motion.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. And Commissioner Mohan, are you interested and willing to accept the nomination?
Absolutely. And I think I also want to add that I'm really, I want to acknowledge Commissioner Jane's gesture here. Because this, to me, is a symbol of how commissions and groups should work together. So thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Well, can we get a motion then?
I'll move to accept the resignation of Commissioner Jane and the nomination of Commissioner Mohan for the vice chair role.
Yeah, I second that. Okay. Recording Secretary, could we please get a roll call vote for this?
Commissioners Jane.
Aye.
Mohan.
I guess so, yes.
Pace.
Aye.
Wedge.
Aye.
And Chair Morgan.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously.
Okay, well, great. With that, we can move to the public hearings. And we have one item here tonight, item four, P250026, City of Pleasanton, PMC, Pleasanton Municipal Code Updates on the ADU Chapter. And I understand that Emily is prepared to make a presentation on this topic.
Yeah, I am chair, thank you, and good evening to the commission.
Thank you.
So tonight we have three items that we'll be discussing. First is a recommendation to the city council to adopt amendments to the municipal code regarding accessory dwelling units. Second is a discussion of separate conveyance of ADUs. And third, I want to just provide a broad update on ADU production within the city and share about one exciting new program that we have. All right, so a little background on ADUs. Pleasanton Municipal Code, Chapter 18106, was established in March 2021 after a whole slate of ADU laws passed by the state. And it was amended in May 2024. And as you may know, state ADU law has changed numerous times and is expected to be amended in the future. And the city has fairly limited control when it comes to ADUs. The state regulates a lot of, or most of the parameters regarding ADUs. The amendments tonight are to, in order to bring our municipal code into alignment with state law. And I will be discussing two state laws in particular, Senate Bill 1211 and Assembly Bill 2553. There was a third ADU law passed, but it relates to ADUs built in a coastal zone, so we don't have to discuss that tonight. All right, so the first bill, Senate Bill 1211, relates to two main areas. The first is replacement parking. And this expands the prohibition on requiring replacement parking.
Emily, can I just get you for one second, just in case we have people listening that don't know what an ADU is? Can you just, maybe just define that really fast for everyone?
ADU is accessory dwelling unit.
And just like, what is that, in the context of like, what does that mean to like the kind of someone listening who may not know what that means?
So it's typically an attached or detached living unit that's accessory to the primary dwelling unit, typically with a single family residence. Thank you, we're living in our acronym land, so that's a, thank you for grounding us in that. So accessory dwelling units. So state law prohibits a local agency from requiring replacement parking. Previously, previous state law prohibited us from requiring replacement parking when covered spaces were removed or converted to accessory dwelling units. And Senate Bill 1211 expands that to prohibiting required replacement for uncovered parking spaces. And this Senate bill also touches on multifamily ADUs. So first, it defines livable space to mean a space in a dwelling unit intended for human habitation, including living, sleeping, eating, cooking, or sanitation. And this is important because non-livable space in existing multifamily buildings can be converted into an accessory dwelling unit. So the state, this law defines what livable space is. And most significantly, it increases the quantity of detached ADUs that are permitted. Under this bill, lots with existing multifamily units may have up to eight detached ADUs or as many units exist on site. So if there are eight existing units on site, eight or more, they can build eight detached ADUs. If there are four units on site, they can build four, and so on and so forth. However, lots with proposed multifamily dwellings remain limited to two detached ADUs. All right, so the second bill is Assembly Bill 2553. And this relates to legalizing unpermitted units. And there are five main areas that have changed under this assembly bill. First, it expands the applicability of the legalizing process to include junior ADUs. It also changes the construction cutoff date to January 1st, 2020. It defines the requirements that local agencies must follow if they're pointing out violations to health and safety standards and refers directly to the Health and Safety Code. And then it also requires public notification and addresses the scope of city inspections and limits on remedial action. And this bill is really intended to help people find pathways to legalization if they have existing unpermitted units. And so the amendments are included in Exhibit A for you this evening. And all of them are required to bring our local ordinance into conformance with state law. All right. So next, we have a brief discussion of separate conveyance of ADU. So the commission had discussed this at their meeting on September 11th of 2024. And at that time, I would say there is maybe a mixed interest in pursuing this further and some discussion about some of the complexities of this, a potential of this program. So the primary complexity of this remains in that Pleasanton has a large number of PUDs and with that, a large number of homeowners associations. And separate conveyance of accessory dwelling units would require a property owner to obtain approval from a broader HOA before forming a homeowners association between the main unit and an accessory dwelling unit. So staff has gone back and done a bit of research. And to our knowledge, San Jose is the first and only Bay Area jurisdiction to adopt separate conveyance of ADUs. And since their ordinance adoption in July 2024, they've received two preliminary applications, but no applications have been approved. And seems to be a fairly limited interest in pursuing this program. So again, staff finds that, kind of given the complexity of this program and other pathways for people to pursue some kind of small lot subdivision, say through SB9, we do not recommend dedicating staff time to establishing such a program unless there's a wider interest or we can learn more from other cities that are similar to Pleasanton in their number of PUDs and HOAs. All right. So lastly, I want to just turn to a little bit of data and some ADU program updates. So this graph shows the number of permitted units and finalled units for the past four years. So you can see we have finalled an average of 12 units per year. So 47 units have been finalled in the past four years. And we've permitted 74 units in the past four years. So you see that big jump in permitting in 2024. So I think there is a little bit broader recognition of accessory dwelling units as housing type. And more people are pursuing the permitting. So we're likely to see that number jump in 2025. I also wanted to share an exciting new rebate program that we have. So homeowners can receive a rebate up to $15,000 for constructing an ADU on their property. This is facilitated by Senator Steve Glazer. He has piloting an ADU accelerator program to provide direct rebates to homeowners building ADUs. And this program runs through August 31st, 2026. So there are two different criteria for the rebate. So first would be for non-restricted ADUs. And homeowners can receive up to $7,500 depending on the size of the ADU. But if homeowners voluntarily deed restrict their unit, they could receive up to $15,000. So we have a pretty straightforward process that's outlined on our website. We have a separate ADU page under Community Development. So there's an online application. Staff will review to make sure all the criteria are filled out. And then homeowners have six months to obtain a building permit. And then they must obtain a certificate of occupancy before August 1st, 2026. And then once we verify that the certificate of occupancy has been issued, the homeowners would receive a rebate. So I think this is pretty happy news for our homeowners in Pleasanton. All right. So in summary, staff recommends that the planning commission draft, discuss the draft amendments to the municipal code related to PMC 18106 and recommend that the city council adopt the proposed changes. And staff recommends deferring an ordinance allowing separate conveyance of ADUs and a greater number of jurisdictions similar to Pleasanton adopt such an ordinance. And I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. So we had really three sections. One is a recommendation to modify our municipal code to comply with the state law. Secondly, a staff recommendation to not allow separate conveyance of ADUs at this point. And third, just educational discussion about a rebate program that people can apply for, for ADUs. So with that, are there any clarifying questions of staff?
Can I, yeah, can I jump in maybe with a couple? So maybe just to, if we can go back to the, kind of the first piece where we're talking about changes to the municipal code, just to make sure I'm tracking and to make sure the record is clear, that there have been a series of changes in existing regulations in the city of Pleasanton. Many of what the regulations and things that we have done as a city over time have been driven by state requirements. The state has made new requirements that we are now trying to bring our regulations in compliance with. Unless we want to get into a fight with the state, these are changes that we must make. Is that right?
Yes, and in fact, our ordinance would be considered invalid unless we come into alignment with state law.
Okay, so then whatever, the state law would supersede what we do anyway. So we're just trying to come into compliance. So these are state mandated requirements. So if I understand, then, thanks for that, Emily, and good presentation, as usual, by the way. Thank you. So then, so then if I understand, the first one that we had talked about, this one, this one relates to parking, which is always a hot topic. And so I just want to make sure we linger on this long enough to make sure we understand it. The requirement says that when someone puts an ADU on their property, basically what they're doing is they're adding a new structure where someone can live on their property. So as an individual homeowner, I could put a new structure on my property, build something over my garage, put up a shed, whatever. And I get to do that under this state requirement. And now I don't have to create parking for that, right? So the parking would go onto the street. That's what, that's what this is saying, right?
So a minor clarification. An uncovered parking spot onsite is required for ADUs unless they are within one half mile of transit. But what this says is, well, previous state law allowed if you were converting a garage to an ADU, you did not have to replace that covered parking. But in a scenario where if, say your driveway is on the side of your home and you're constructing an ADU and that takes up that uncovered parking space, you don't have to replace that parking space if that's the only parking that's provided onsite. But under circumstances where you don't need to occupy the space of a parking lot, parking space to construct the accessory dwelling unit, a parking space is required onsite for the new unit.
Okay, so there are, so the implications, if I understand it, is where you are going to convert parking into a unit, you don't necessarily have to go and find new parking on the space, which means you're going to, basically you're parking on the street.
Yes, that could be one outcome.
All right. So that's something that we should be aware of. There's nothing to do about it except comply with state law. But that's something we often get, how is this going to be parked? The answer is, in certain situations, it's going to be parked on the street. So that's one. And then the second one has to do with kind of what can be converted into a livable space? What can be converted into an ADU? And in this case, it's simply saying you don't have to convert something that's already livable into an ADU. You can convert something that's, you can convert a car park into a ADU, right? Okay. All right, thank you. I think I've got that tracked. And then, and then with respect to kind of the, the separate conveyance, basically that regulation is about if someone were to make, create, build an ADU on their property, whether or not they could sell that to someone independent from them, a family member, a non-family member, whoever else, and that would be its kind of own separate property. That's what this is about, right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Very good, very thorough clarifying questions. Commissioner Wedge, do you have any clarifying questions? Or did Commissioner Pace steal your?
Thank you, Commissioner Pace. Yes, I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner Jane? Jane?
So I think I have a question on parking itself. So we had some projects in downtown which came in. I think there was one on Ray Street where someone was putting a unit in the back and they had those moving, like they were even suggesting putting like a garage to get the car in and then they can move it up and down. And was that an ADU application or was that just a?
No, that was just a regular unit. It was not, not classified as an ADU.
So if in our planning district as downtown specific, if someone comes and they want to do ADU, we can't impose parking regulations, is that?
Well, as Emily stated, depending on where it is in the downtown, I mean, there, when you're within a half mile of transit, then you're exempt from providing parking. But if you're outside, you know, beyond the half, a half mile, you do have to provide one parking space if you're constructing a new ADU. Unless, as this states, the construction of that ADU is now taking place of, or excuse me, I'm saying that wrong. You still have to provide the one parking space for an ADU if it's outside of the half mile transit. But if it's being constructed on existing parking, it's for the main unit, that does not have to be replaced.
Yeah, that's quite interesting, especially in an area, dense area like downtown.
Correct, some of our older areas, they will probably be more affected.
So if someone builds and, let's say you have two units, you can pretty much take two units and say, hey, one unit, I'm going to allocate for ADU. And one unit is actually reduced. Now you have more people living in the same kind of space or more space, but same area, but they won't have parking or they'll rely on public parking. Thanks for clarifying that. I think the second question is related to this multifamily. It says the lots have to be the same, so it has to be one lot with more than one unit? Because some, especially, let's say, there are some units where there are two lots, they're part of HOA, but the wall is adjoining, like they have a common wall. But they are two separate lots. Would they still be considered single family or will they be more like multifamily?
Those.
Yeah.
I think what you're referring to would be duets, but each of the duets would be considered a single family. So we'd be looking at the, whether there are multiple units on one parcel.
So they'll be considered one, like single family?
Yes.
Okay. So multifamily won't apply, right?
The, yeah, the multifamily ADU provisions would not apply in that case.
And just to make sure, like if someone subdivides the lot using SB9, and then now you have two actual separate lots, in that case also, it will not be considered multifamily. So you can technically have four units, like two main single family and two ADUs. But since those are separate lots, and?
If, there are a couple provisions under SB9 and one allows the construction of a, of a housing development unit, so that would be like an additional
Bonus.
Unit. And I think in, depending on how that was configured, it could potentially down the line be considered a multifamily unit. But in the case of subdivision, only one primary unit, single family home, housing development unit would be permitted. And then a detached ADU and a junior ADU would be permitted.
Sure, thank you. So I don't think we have too much jurisdiction to control this. But I'm just worried about if people do SB9 and they consider that as multifamily and then they already put two ADUs, now they're going to come and say each, that won't be possible?
No, I don't think that would be permitted under SB9.
Okay. Cool, thank you. That's all.
Mr. Mohan, clarifying questions?
Thank you. So what, what happens if we are not in compliance with the state law? As a city, if you say we do want parking?
If we're not in compliance with state law, our existing ordinance would be considered invalid, including all of the objective design standards we've adopted for accessory dwelling units.
So then the homeowners can go bypass the city? And build this?
Correct, yeah. So technically, they would still submit for building permits to the city, but they would just essentially ignore our ordinance and they would just be following state law. So as Emily noted, the, one of the main things for Pleasanton are, are objective design standards that we've adopted as part of our, our accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Those would not be applicable.
And then just to continue that chain of thought, if we denied the application, then we'd be subject to lawsuit, correct?
We, correct, we would not be able to deny it because it's a, they're submitting directly to building. It's ministerial.
Again, I do have a challenge with the, with the parking issue, right? I mean, like a lot of us, I'm all for sensible development and getting more units in. But especially places like downtown, where already businesses are screaming about lack of parking as one reason why, why customers go to livermore.
Let's just save that for the discussions section, if that's okay, if you.
Yeah, sure, sure. Okay, that's, that's fair, that's fair. Okay, so I'm done for now. I'll probably carry on afterwards.
So yeah, I'm sorry, let's go ahead and open it up for discussion now. And if you'd like to start, just keep going, please. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. All right, so, so that actually, you know, parking is, I think, an issue that we should discuss, especially in downtown, where that impacts businesses. So is there a way to, you know, have folks think about building parking spaces within the ambit of the overall state law? You know, who can faster, you know, permitting versus slower permitting or, I mean, I'm just saying.
It's objective design standard, there's nothing we can do. Like if, if we don't do it, then, then what's going to happen is they will simply comply with state law and all of our design standards become irrelevant. So things like building materials, design, you know, consistency with neighborhood and things like that, that just goes away. We literally have no ability because we don't have any approval ability. And then in a lawsuit, we would lose it. So we get, we get nothing. So I mean, it's, this is not to say that every single ADU is going to be unparked. This is a more narrow exception than that, but the reality is this is like building close to, you know, the five-story building that's going in close to the ace train. There's nothing we can do. It's, it's been decided at the state level. So you can register your complaint with your elected official, but I mean, it's, it's not, there's no, there's no fight we're going to have here. There's no decision we're going to make here that's going to get, that's going to get the state to do anything different than what it's already done. These, these, these have passed. So I just, it's, this is, the city council can't do anything like this is going to, if someone really wants to challenge this, it's going to have to be a lawsuit on behalf of municipalities to the state challenging the legislature. That's not going to happen in this room.
And it might be analogous to the existing laws where people can build housing, but they don't have to provide parking if they're within a half a mile of public transit.
Right.
And so it's something you don't necessarily like as a city, but you live with it. And then maybe the city has to provide more public parking as we've done in our downtown to keep things whole and keep it, you know, desirable for the businesses, something along those lines.
Yeah, I think that's right. I think the way it's ultimately going to come up is when we get these things where we actually have some control around, you know, let's take the Vineyard 2.0, which is the thing we were talking about last time we were here. When you do a traffic study and you have to do things like park that and so forth, that's where the parking assessment is going to come back in. And that's where the city is going to get a chance to look at these things and maybe make some changes with respect to those other projects. But there's, there's nothing we're going to be able to do on these projects. The, the city, that, you know, the states come down and said thou shalt. It's, we, we can all be frustrated with it and I certainly share your frustration, but we've been dealing with this now for the last, I don't know, eight years that I've been doing this here. Like the, the, the state's just decided.
And I get it, I think, and I want to acknowledge the fact that cities do hard to share the blame. Because we put our head in the sand, right, and said we will not build anything for a long time. And this is another pendulum is swinging too much the other way. And I, so I get it.
It's a good conversation. I'm not trying to shut you down.
Yeah.
You know, we, having lived through this, like it's, it's uncomfortable and, and our, our community is going to be unhappy with the consequence where this, where this goes unparked. And again, it's not going to be every single thing, but I, I promise you this is going to come back. And then the answer is exactly, this is what the state required.
Yeah. Okay, all right, I'm okay now, thanks.
Yeah, I, I think, if I may.
Please, Commissioner Jane?
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I think parking is a big issue. The other issue is there is no requirement for these units to be rented. So they say ADUs, like we see about a dozen every year we approve, but there's no requirement that you have to rent them out. So you could just call them as ADU and never rent it out. So is it really creating supply in the market? I don't know. I, I, I feel like a lot of these state laws, they really don't help increase supply where it's needed. It just creates more units. It definitely takes one parking. So let's say I have a house in downtown and right now I can't go through the regular process and get rid of one parking space. Now I found a way where I can claim that I'm building a junior ADU and then I get my extension approved, but I don't have any opposition. So there, there are ways people, people are not forced to treat them as real ADUs. So I'm, I'm definitely concerned, but what can I do? I don't know. But it is a genuine thing, like something like this is not preconditioned on what you do with that radio. So it's, it's kind of very, I don't know whom, whom it's helping, the state laws. It's definitely not helping people who deserve to be helped. Yeah, I have more points on the conveyance, but let's first.
I, I think the state would share your concern that they're frustrated too, that all of these laws haven't resulted in that number of housing units that they were targeting for. But why don't you keep going with your other comments for discussion?
Even for this, I, I feel like we, this is the first time I'm hearing about some incentive for ADU, but it's not enough. Like we're looking at easily, even on the lower side, around three hundred, four hundred thousand to build an ADU. Like that fifteen thousand, it's not going to go that far. But if we really, if the state really wanted to solve this problem, they should have also funded it, right? Like I feel like throwing these peanuts, that, that's not going to help. The other piece on the conveyance, so by the way, thanks for researching on the San Jose. I did look at their approvals, so they haven't approved anything, as you also mentioned. They received a couple of applications and San Jose is such a large area and how many houses they have. We are, we pale in comparison of that city. I don't necessarily consider our city to be same as San Jose. San Jose has a very different, like they have urban areas, they have suburban areas, which is very different from Pleasanton. And even there, I'm surprised that they have not received any real interest in getting ADUs conveyed. I, I'm all for homeownership for more people, but I, I don't think it's going to help reduce or put the right people in their houses. Because really what you want is affordability. So what we are looking for is can these units be affordable? But the moment you make them separate units, people are going to expect premium. So, you know, yes, you can do it, but the economics of doing such conveyance isn't there, in my opinion. Someone who's, who has a larger house and they built an ADU, even if they sell that portion, it might actually reduce the value of their main property. And we have some real estate experienced people, so they might chime in here. But my opinion is it, it's not really a good solution for the problem we have at hand. So I'm really not supportive of just going with the half-baked solution. If that solution has to be forthcoming, it has to have some kind of requirements on income, some kind of requirements on pricing. There has to be something which will actually create benefits for the buyers. Yeah, that's all, thank you.
Commissioner Wedge, you have a pretty deep understanding of property and real estate. I'm wondering if you have any thoughts here?
Thank you, Commissioner Pace. I do, and I do agree with Commissioner Jane that that is going to affect the value of the primary residence. Obviously, if somebody's on acreage, it might be a little bit different. But if you're looking at your typical Pleasanton lot that's seven thousand or eight thousand square feet, people who are on corners might be better off because they have a different access and entry, ingress, egress. But if you're in the middle of a cul-de-sac, they're going to be going down the side of a house or through your garage, depending on how you have, you know, the layout of your property. But I don't believe it's going to solve this either. And if you look at the cost to build an ADU for the square footage, you're at easily sometimes five hundred dollars a square foot, maybe six hundred dollars, which isn't considered affordable. So then what is the rent going to be? So I like the idea of it, but I'm not sure it's going to solve the issue of needing more affordable units. And I'm worried about the way the neighborhoods are going to look. I feel people move to Pleasanton or suburban areas for a backyard or space. And if they wanted to live in an urban setting, they would choose maybe a different area or a different type of construction of home. So I think our landscape is going to change and I'm not sure it's going to be for the better for real estate values for those reasons.
Are you, are you in general supportive of what staff has proposed here? Or are there any other considerations that you believe we should be thinking about, Commissioner Wedge?
I wish we had a little bit more control over what we wanted to put in our city and that we didn't have to follow state guidelines. I, I feel that we're a planning commission, this is why we're here. I feel that the law should be locally and not be, we shouldn't be governed by the state. I mean, to be direct, I guess. I mean, I could go around in circles here for a while, but.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Pace, you've made some great comments and asked some good clarifying questions. Just wanted to loop back to see if you had any further discussion items for the commission here?
No, I don't. I, I think there's broad alignment here with this group and, you know, here we are again, feels like Groundhog Day every time these, these state things come down. So I think there's broad consensus, Commissioner Wedge, with, with, with your feeling and I wish we had different choices. But, but the reality is, we're not in a position where we should be the, the tip of the spear and forcing the city through, or forcing the state through litigation to make some changes. So I'm supportive of, of these recommendations. I would just ask, you know, what, what, maybe one thing on the data that you had shared, Ms. Carroll, around the, the number of units? Do we have a sense kind of then for the overall number of units in the city? And do we have any sense for the number of those that have been rented? I, I'm just, that, that would just be more a curiosity point and not directly correlated to how I'm going to vote here, but just curious.
I don't know the overall number of ADUs and junior ADUs within the city, although we could certainly research that and come back. There have been efforts to survey property owners that have built ADUs in the past. And we actually now have an ongoing requirement, if you're building an ADU, you have to fill out a survey and tell us what you're planning to do with it. If a family member will live there, if you're planning to rent it out, if you're not planning to rent it out and what the rent level would be. So we're actively collecting data about that and could report back to the commission. Possibly in six months, we'd have some better data to share.
When the time's right, I'd, I'd love to kind of hear the data. I mean, obviously, one of our goals is to try to expand access. And so it'd be great to know if that was used, so when or if the state actually got interested in what the data was actually showing, we had something to share with them. So thank you, I appreciate the work there. That's it for me.
By the way. I just want to say that it's just an intent. It doesn't mean that it is actually rented out. So the survey just asks what you plan to do with the particular ADU. But then after that, it's, there's no tracking.
Yep.
Commissioner Mohan?
Follow-on question. I do have a follow-on question for you, Commissioner Pace. You said something about a traffic study being an enabler for these conversations. Could you expand on that one?
So when, when you have, my thinking would be, and again, let's use Vineyard 2.0. What's happening with Vineyard 2.0 is where there actually is approval that's required from the city for certain things. One of the things that happens as part of that, that activity is a traffic study. Among other things, they're looking at, you know, it's, it's, they're looking at parking, they're looking at traffic flow and so forth. And so you will ultimately, when those other projects, ones bigger than what you're going to see with an ADU, get approved, you're going to get some data around how it's working and what needs to happen. And so that would be a time where if there's some kind of big impact on parking, we would have an opportunity to mitigate it through that. But that's going to be an infrequent, you know, sporadic as, as things come by. And again, all the, all the applicant at that point is going to do is solve for their problem, not for everybody else's. But it's at least a way that we can, we can gather some data at the, at the moment in time. The, the much bigger ones, kind of the overall plan or whatever, that's going to take different exercises in different times. And that's probably not going to come before this group, you know, in response to a specific applicant that wants to do something specific in a specific, you know, location.
So that's a great point, and that's, I think, something I, I did question the last time, if you remember, for that, for that project. Because I think in the city, what we're doing is every time we get a project, we do a point study for the project and we say, well, adding twenty units or ten units or five units does not change the traffic pattern significantly, which is true. But cumulatively and over the years, there is a change. I mean, Vineyard is a great example, right? You used to run maybe a few years ago in the wild open spaces and now you're chugging along with, with exhaust fumes right there and people like me yelling at you. So, so I think if, if that is a way, I think we do need a more comprehensive traffic study, including in downtown. And again, I, the, the intent is not to shut down growth or the intent is not to shut down units, just to do it sensibly. So if that is a way, I would, I would actually suggest that we do have asked the, the staff to do a more exhaustive downtown or a Vineyard 2.0 or a Pleasanton, you know, five-year projection for traffic to see what are the new hotspots and what adding units will do to the, to those areas. That's just a thought I have.
The other thing I worry about too, going back into the neighborhoods with the ADUs and parking, you're going to have a lot more cars on the streets, kids walk to school. They're not used to having cars, that many cars, they walk across streets. And I'm just worried about safety for the kids who are used to living in neighborhoods without so many cars parked on streets.
Again, if, if that, a comprehensive traffic study is a way to legitimately have a conversation and to put some laws, sensible laws, not shut down growth, but sensible laws that keep us in compliance with the state, I, I actually would propose that we do that.
Yeah, so we, we can't do that here. That's out of scope for our decision-making. That's something we're going to have to take up with the city council and something they want.
Sure.
You know, we can go advocate there, so that's not going to happen here. But I, I'm with you, you know, I mean, having talked to Mike about these kinds of issues many, many times over the last several years, I know there are systematic things that they're looking at and doing. I'm not going to sit here and represent that I know what those are, so I'll kind of leave to that. But for purposes of what you're asking for, the broader assessment, that's something the city council should take up and we can go advocate there. But for purposes of kind of the decision-making we're doing here on these things, like, you know, I'm supportive of, of the recommendations from staff.
So I would, I would, I would rather we actually have, we formally ask the city council to take a look at a comprehensive traffic study as a way to keep in compliance with the, with the state while ensuring appropriate amount of parking for, for our citizens. That's what I would propose. So I think I am not fully in, if that is a possible way to have a sensible, long-term plan for parking and development, I would propose that we do that instead of approving this and then trying to shoehorn a comprehensive plan after three or four years into stuff that's already been passed or approved.
Yeah, we're not, I mean, that's not going to work, right? Like the states, this is done. Like if, if, if we don't have this passed and someone comes in and makes an application and says, I want to comply with the state and not what you guys have, we lose all power. So, so like we don't, we don't get the luxury of waiting and deciding in two years what we want to do. Like that's not how it's going to work. An applicant is going to come in and say, I'm compliant with state law. You guys aren't compliant with state law, I'm going to do whatever the state says, not what you say, and we're, we're out of luck. So the, the only way to keep some control, some local control over what we need to do is to update our laws now or update our regulations now to be compliant with state law and then deal with the longer-term consequences. That's the only way it's going to work. Otherwise, it's just, you know, if you go back and think about Commissioner Mohan, when we were, when we were dealing with all the, all the ADU issues we had before and all of a sudden, the, the, the timing was that we had to get everything done by, I don't remember the date, January 31st or something. And so we had all those meetings in November, December to get done in time because if we didn't do it, then someone could come in at that window in between and magically make an application and we would lose all control. It's, that's the same, that's the same gimmick that could be used by, by developers. And so we, we're stuck on timing. We just got to get this, we got to get this done.
Yeah, but you know, this is, but again, and I agree with you because, and, and, and we were kind of dragged along to, to agree to that proposal because there was the gun to our heads of January 31st. But I don't think that should be the way we do it every time, right? So, so it almost seemed like every time there's a, this is a long-term conversation, we say, well, too bad, there's a gun to our head, let's approve this. And I, for one, I'm saying, no, let's get some proactive conversation. And it does not need to take years. I mean, this is, this is the other issue that we have. There are brilliant people over here who know the law. This should be a two-week or a four-week conversation, not a two-years conversation. I mean, let's, let's have our cities start working faster.
If I, if I could add some information.
Thank you.
This, it's, it's, it's ongoing, it's going to happen every single year as our legislation, legislators are constantly amending and adding bills all the time. So, you know, as cities, local cities, we're, we're constantly playing catch-up. So, you know, as cities, local cities, we're constantly playing catch-up all the time. So for example, with these, the legislation was passed in September. And actually, they went into effect January 1st. So we're already behind. Because here we are in beginning of February. So as Commissioner Pace summarized, I mean, we, we are, we are, we have to do this. It's something that we have to do. Now, your concerns regarding traffic, I'm not a traffic engineer. I'm not even going to begin to try to talk like Mike Tesano. But I will gladly pass along your comments. At this time, you know, just considering our city's budget issues, I don't believe we're going to be adding any additional projects or studies. But, you know, we do look at the projects on a case-by-case basis, the large development projects, of course. And the cumulative is one of the items considered. So again, we will pass along your comments to Mike Tesano and his team. As Commissioner Pace stated, our traffic engineering division, they're constantly looking, and that's their job. They're constantly looking at traffic throughout, throughout the city. They, they will look at, obviously, intersections, areas that work closely with the police department, areas that have the higher number, unfortunately, of accidents. And so then they try to look at those areas to see if they can do any modifications or calming. And I don't know when, when, for example, the next citywide traffic model is going to be done. I mean, we could provide that information and we could email that out to the commission if you're interested.
Just to maybe put this in perspective a little bit, you know, a couple of years ago, we were under a lot of pressure to pass the housing element, get that approved. And I believe that was about 6,000 units over a seven or eight-year period. And with this ADU item, it's so far 15, maybe 20 items a year. So it might amount to a couple hundred units, you know, versus 6,000 units, which is a much bigger, broader issue that has a much bigger impact on, on traffic. And, and I think it is a concern by a number of people. Everyone here tonight has basically said that there, I think they've said that everyone is in support of the ADU concept. If someone has a property and they would rather have a unit on their property rather than landscaping or a yard or something, that's fair. And that affects them in that decision. And then they can let family members use it or rent it out for income. But the parking issue is tougher to swallow because it affects the community and the neighborhood, not just the party that's making the decision to add the ADU. And so I'm, I'm in support of Commissioner Pace's suggestion that the best we can do at this point is just to have further discussions with our traffic engineer and then raise our concerns with city council to see, to understand what is happening and perhaps what the other city leaders are interested in focusing the resources on right now. And then after doing that, we could decide if we wanted to take any further actions as a planning commission.
I have a comment to make. So I think we did rush a couple of years or maybe three years now back to comply with whatever the requirement is. But I don't expect us to pass when we come to the midpoint check-in. Like, there's no way we could produce as many units as asked by the state legislature of our city. So I think, I don't know, the other strategy could be, we stop catching up to the state. So I see the point which Commissioner Mohan has. Like, what did we get by doing it? Because we're going to be not producing as many units as we expected. Anyway, we'll be out of compliance at midpoint check-in. Like, looking at the numbers, I don't, I don't think we will be in compliance at midpoint. But I'm supportive of this ADU thing. This is a smaller issue, in my opinion. But what I'm trying to say is, yes, a lot of things which state imposes, it doesn't produce that many units. We're going to fall out of compliance because their requirement is not for zoning or how many units you zone for. Their requirements are how many units you actually produce. We don't control that. Like, no one does, except you, only way to solve it is with money. And it's expensive to solve that problem by just zoning without state mandating any money to support that. So I am in support of this particular proposal in front of us. But what I'm trying to say is, broadly speaking, I'm with Commissioner Mohan that we should at some point stop complying if it doesn't make sense. What did we get out of compliance if at midpoint check-in, we're not going to be in compliance anyway? So we bought ourselves a few years. That's all. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And as Commissioner Pace pointed out, there are some situations where if we, if we don't have laws on the books or approved housing elements, then there are ways for developers to build where the city even has less control. And that was something we were facing with the housing element.
And I agree with that, right? So we pushed it out by a few years. So we successfully did that. But at midpoint check-in, again, the same question is going to come. How many units you produced? If you didn't produce enough units, you're out of compliance. And by the way, there is a discussion, which I'm part of, where people are talking about how the HCD came up with those numbers. And I'm not going to go in that discussion. It's not transparent. It's not clear how we can produce. Why do we need more units when the state population is declining? When, so I don't want to go into that rabbit hole, but.
So I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to support or recommend to the city council the recommendations as presented by staff on these items. And we'll leave the political discussions to other times and forums.
So I would, I would like to add a recommendation to the city council. Because I agree with you, Commissioner Pace, this is not our formal scope to have these conversations or decide on these things. But I would like to add a formal recommendation or suggestion to the, to the council about taking a look at the comprehensive traffic study if that enables us to have some level of reasonable control on the, on the parking situation in the city. And I'm just going with you, what you said, that that is one possible way. So I would like to add that recommendation to the council as part of this motion.
Sir, are you making a substitute motion then?
I mean, unless you want to, I guess so, because this is the official motion. So then I'm making a substitute motion and.
Would you mind restating?
So I would say, yes, with an additional point of formally recommending to the city council to.
Approve the staff's recommendation, is what Commissioner Pace recommended?
Yes, but I'm saying also take, and I'll leave it to Commissioner Pace to give me the formal language for what I'm trying to say here. But a formal recommendation to the council to see if a comprehensive traffic study enables the city to be in compliance with this, with the state laws, while also maintaining some level of control over local parking situation. So if, again, I'm just going by Commissioner Pace's view that a comprehensive traffic study would enable us to have some possible control over what does get built. If so, then I would formally recommend to the council to do it.
So I think what you're suggesting, so I'm just playing two steps ahead, right?
Okay.
So let's say we did do that traffic study.
Yes.
And we got numbers back and it says, yeah, it's going to be a problem. Can we deny?
I don't, I'm just going by Commissioner Pace's view.
No, we cannot, right?
And as the grant.
That's, that's the problem. Like, we can be aware of it, but we can't, again, if someone comes in compliant with what these new state mandated rules require, even if our parking studies, traffic studies say, "We can't do it," it doesn't matter. They get to do it.
Oh, okay. So then maybe I misunderstood what you said initially.
I think Commissioner Pace was saying earlier that there are other discretionary projects that the planning commission, the city council will review at some future date. And to the extent that we have traffic problems, we can potentially mitigate them by making special or different requirements.
Okay, my bad. I misunderstood what you were saying. I thought you could, we could.
Not with respect to these.
Okay, all right. Then I'm, okay, then I'm in support of the motion.
Maybe City Attorney can confirm, right? Like, it's, if, let's say, we did those two steps, did the traffic study and it says, yes, it fails. Parking is going to be a problem. Can we deny any application?
No, you could not. You would be subject to the state law if, yeah. So you want, I mean, this, this gives you the ability to be consistent with state law, but provide your own local standards. If you choose not to update your ordinance, you will not allow your local standards to comply and you will be subject just to state law.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And thanks, Commissioner Pace. All right. Okay, in that case, I'm in support of the recommendation.
Do we have a second for Commissioner Pace's motion?
I second Commissioner Pace.
Okay, so we have a motion Commissioner Pace made to adopt the recommendation that the city made to change our Pleasanton municipal code to be consistent with state law and also to hold back on making any efforts to allow for separate conveyance of ADUs at this point. And we have a second for the motion. And I guess before we close this, I'd just like to ask, do we have any other further discussion among the commissioners before we take a vote?
We have a lot to discuss, but not on this topic.
Okay. All right. Could we please get a roll call vote?
All right. Commissioners Jane?
Aye.
Mohan?
Yes.
Pace?
Aye.
Wedge?
Aye.
And Chair Morgan?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so we'll close with that. Item four is closed. And as we wind down the meeting here, I'd just like to ask whether we have any reports of meetings attended, committee task force, et cetera. Commissioner Jane?
So I did attend BPTC, the Bike and Pedestrian Committee Meeting. And there was a discussion on some of the roads being finished. And we're going to get elevated bike path, possibly on last position. So that will be great for people taking bike to school, et cetera. It will take some time and still trying to figure out the budget, but that was discussed. And there was a discussion on taking on bike and pad master plan. So that's an ongoing thing, trying to find the budget to do it. And the bids are out. So that might be a good thing for the city. As we revise bike and pad plan, it will make a lot of intersections ADA compliant. It will create more space for people to use alternate means of transport. So they don't have to rely on parking and cars as much. So that was the exciting part. We also changed how the committee runs. So earlier, it was a fixed set of chair and vice chair. So this was the first time, based on the council approval last year, we selected, the committee actually selected their own chair and vice chair. So that was awesome. And that's all from my side. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Mohan, any meetings?
Nothing to report.
Kind of on break here after a very active winter over the last three to six months, I guess. Yeah. Okay, Commissioner Wedge?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Pace? I don't have anything to report either. Staff, any actions by city council to summarize for us?
Yes, as noted in the packet, the city council at the January 21st meeting approved the consent calendar as recommended. Also, on February 4th, they approved the consent calendar as recommended. The major item was going to be the, the public hearing to receive an update on the East Pleasanton project, projects. And that was continued to the upcoming, the next meeting, which will actually be this next Tuesday on February 18th.
Yeah, potentially another traffic issue as we look at developing East Pleasanton. Okay. Is that it on the city council actions?
Yes, Chair.
And how about future planning calendar?
Future planning calendar, we, we do not have any items for the February 26th meeting. So that will likely be canceled as we've passed the legal notification period. We have two meetings scheduled in March, March 12th and March 26th. And as of right now, I do have tentative items on those calendars. So please plan to attend. Thank you.
Okay. And then the last item here is matters initiated by commission members. And so I guess Commissioner Mohan, you know, one last chance to think about whether there's anything you'd like to informally request or suggest regarding traffic or whether you want to pick that up with staff and our traffic engineer and discussions with city council members separately. Just one last opportunity to comment if you wish.
I think I'm good. I pushed this point with a thought. I misunderstood Commissioner Pace's point. I thought this was, this would enable us to have some control. But if it doesn't, then it's a moot point for this conversation. We'll have separate discussions with the council members.
Okay, Commissioner Jane?
Yeah, so I, I heard the East Pleasanton discussion, but it was focused on these projects. I would like to learn a little bit more, like, if we are dusting off our East Pleasanton plan anytime soon, like, how can we send a message to the council if there is a support from other commissioners? Like, that whole East Pleasanton area seems like ripe for abuse by developers. Like, there might be more things coming. We have an opportunity to make it a little bit more planned if we start working on a plan for that East Pleasanton area. Otherwise, we saw two projects already coming in. There might be more. Who knows, right? Like, I'm just speculating. So does the rest of the commission want to send a formal request to the council to consider dusting off that East Pleasanton plan? And that might elevate some of the unforeseen, unplanned, I should say, changes which we will start seeing on the East Pleasanton side.
Well, what's, what's on schedule? What's the city council going to do already?
So the, on February 18th, this is to, to receive an update and to formally authorize the annex, how do I say this? Sorry. It's essentially pre-annexation, authorizing staff time to continue working and accept formal applications. Because these two projects, what are called Arroyo Lago and East Lakes, are both located in the county. We have been working at a very high level with the developer on looking at impacts to infrastructure, for example. But we have not gotten into project-level details. So this is really a check-in meeting as we met with council last August. So now we're checking in with them and providing the information that they requested for them to review and consider. And then they will make a formal recommendation. Yes, staff, please go ahead and accept the formal applications for pre-annexation. And the developer has stated, if they're given the green light, they will be submitting their Arroyo Lago project first. As that is pretty far along in the county. They have submitted under Builders' Remedy. They submitted an application for Arroyo Lago. The East Lakes project, they have also submitted an SB 330 and Builders' Remedy project with the county. But it's at the, it's at the preliminary stage. And they have not started any sequin analysis. For example, like I said, the Arroyo Lago project has been pretty, pretty well-designed. And they, there's draft EIR, for example. So that one's been a lot more vetted, whereas East Lakes is further out.
Were both of those items on the city council agenda for the item that was continued, both projects?
Yes, Chair.
And is staff, was staff's recommendation at those meetings to continue with the efforts to annex those properties?
Yes, with continued discussions as well on the development terms regarding annexation, maintenance of roadways, El Charro extension. There are a number of items that we. There are a number of items that we, that have been undecided and that we are seeking direction from city council.
And as far as I know, the East Pacific Plan that was studied years ago was put on hold and set aside and there are currently no efforts to, to do another study or continue that study regarding the east side. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So with that, Commissioner Jane, do you have any other thoughts?
No, I, I, I think what I said, I stand by that, right? Because these are very project-specific discussions which happened at the city council. But what I'm talking about is the plan for East Pleasanton, which was supposed to be started in 2020, but then COVID hit and it got de-prioritized. And we are seeing already the consequences of that. Like, two projects came through, it's not part of our general plan. And if we had a East Pleasanton plan, that, that would have allowed for a little bit more plan development. So I think that's what I'm asking, if other commissioners are in support, I would like to formally request council to consider, you know, dusting off that all 2020 plans for East Pleasanton and start working.
Help me out here, Commissioner Pace. You've been in my chair in the past. It's not an item on the agenda, it's not something that the staff is currently progressing. And, and if it was ever to be considered, it probably have to be an item that the, the city council and staff would, would decide what they wanted to do for their study. Either start a new study or, or pick up where we left on the old study. But I'm not sure at this point what, what influence we have other than by perhaps talking to city council members to understand whether we can influence them if we're interested.
Yeah, I think, I think, I mean, Kim, correct me, but I think, as I understand it, I mean, we don't, we don't have the power to require the city council to do anything. And so all we can do is kind of prompt them to think about things. And it will really be up to them and their priorities about what they want to do. You know, I think the record here and what's going on with those two division, you know, subdivision plans is making it pretty clear that the east side is something we're gonna have to, to, to decide on and do it quickly because it's gonna, that's gonna keep happening under, you know, under the builder's remedy unless, unless something happens. So I'm confident that it's in people's minds. And certainly, you know, we can ask that, that they do it. But there's, I mean, formal request, no formal request, they're, they're gonna, we don't, we don't really have any power to do anything at this stage because we, we're responsive to things as opposed to an initiating body. So I'm, I'm certainly sympathetic. It's in my backyard, almost literally. It's in my front yard view all the time. So I'm certainly sympathetic to making sure we get this right.
Well, and, and if I can add too, I mean, in a perfect planning world, yes. I'm a planner at heart. I would love to, if we had a East Pleasanton specific plan to really guide the development here. But as we know, that, that, that was halted. The developer has stated, you know, they've been patient for probably 10-plus years. And they have a, an opportunity to be able to pursue this through the county. But ultimately, they, their preference is to annex into the city. So we are dealt with in a way of having our, our backs to the wall, so to speak. But there are some things that we can negotiate and talk to them about. And, and what's really challenging right now is given our financial situation, we, we just don't have the, the staff resources unless the, the developer would be willing to say fund a specific plan.
I, I guess I'd like to suggest maybe that Commissioner Jane attend that city council meeting and maybe speak as a member of the public in support of, of developing a plan or something along those lines, if that's appropriate.
Yeah, it certainly would be. I mean, I, I would just say, I'm, I'm confident the city council's aware of these issues. I know I've had conversations with several of them individually over time, no Brown Act issues, to make sure that, that these issues, and I know it is something that they each care about to the extent I've had these conversations with them. So I, I'm sure they would welcome further, further public feedback about it. And I know it's something they think about. In, in a world of lots of choices, how do you prioritize? So I, I, I don't know that a motion's gonna do anything, but, but certainly having this on record. And I'm confident that council will hear from our, from our, from our wonderful planners about our concerns over these issues and are kind of separately focused on them too.
So I, I think I agree with that, but at the same time, if there's agreement among us, like, what's the harm in sending a request that, rather than waiting for something to happen? Funding issues apart, like, funding is not my concern, fortunately. But at this point, if we are looking, we are responsible for making sure there is some plan development in the city. I, I think it's our responsibility to send a message that, hey, we would like to pursue this East Pleasanton specific plan. And then it's ultimately up to the council to decide whether they want to fund it, whether they want to pursue it. But not sending that message as a planning commission is different. Like, if we individually talk to them, that's slightly different than sending it via the planning commission.
I, I can think of a few different options. One is the meeting minutes for this meeting could reflect, you know, concern that, you know, we don't have any plan in place and maybe we should dust it off or revive it. Another would be to attend the city council meeting, express concern there. I guess another option would be that if everybody or majority of people on the planning commission felt strongly, we could potentially word something to, you know, tell, tell them that there was concern in the planning commission and, and were interested in being more progressive in developing a plan. So I'd just like maybe to hear just a little bit more from Commissioner Wedge and Pace on what you, and Mohan, as far as what you're thinking path forward on this item would be, if anything.
You can, you can also submit written comments. Once the pack, I, I didn't look to see if the packet's been published. It might be published tomorrow. But once the city council packet is published, you can go on there and there is a link to, to submit individual comments, which you can obviously state your name and also state that you are a planning commissioner, but you're not representing the planning commissioner as a whole, just as an individual. And then those comments will be incorporated into the city council record.
Yeah, but I'm not asking for that. Like, that I know I can do. I'm asking for the commission to consider.
Are there other people on the planning commission that would like to go down that path of submitting a unified recommendation to city council? Or are we at that point? Mr. Wedge? Mr. Pace? Mr. Mohan?
I can, yeah. So, so as part of my fun time I had last year, I, I, I met a lot of people in, in that area. This is front and center for the residents of that area. I also, like you said, do believe the, the builders do want to be annexed into Pleasanton. That makes all sorts of sense for them. And third, I think this goes back, is tied to the previous conversation about traffics, a comprehensive traffic study. I think time and time again, we come to the same point. And that's also been my experience in business and life, that if you take a step back and just plan something, it actually takes less time, ironically, right, in, in the long run. I do think we have a chance with the, or the council has a chance, not us. The council has a chance to do a proactive plan around East Pleasanton. And I know the council is thinking about that as, you know, as, I also talked to a bunch of those guys. So I, I wouldn't mind putting a formal recommendation to the, to the council to take, have a, a formal plan done or dusted up the, the previous plan. Right, because why reinvent the wheel if you don't need to? So I'll, I'll support a formal recommendation of a, of a proactive plan.
I wasn't here in 2020, so.
Nor was I. I must confess, I haven't even read the, the east plan.
I haven't either. But I, I'm familiar with a little bit of it from what I've read in other publications. At least I feel. And from what I've read, I would support that, dusting it off. And I'd like to read it as well.
I mean, if, if we feel like we want to make a recommendation to get their attention, that's fine. I mean, they're, they're gonna do what they're gonna do, and I know this is on their mind. But if, if we feel like this is gonna be helpful, then I'm, then I'm certainly supportive of that. I don't, again, I don't know that it's going to do anything, but fair enough, we can, we can make a record. So do, do you want to just make a motion on this then?
City attorney, what are our options here? Is one of them just to simply state that the planning commission is interested in having a more formal planning process, potentially dusting off the East Pleasanton plan? Or is this something where we should actually have a formal, formal recommendation and a vote to, to officially do that? Because we're not voting to approve or disapprove something, we're just.
You don't have anything before you, right, to approve or disapprove, so.
So is a motion even appropriate in this case? Or is it a matter of just having consensus?
I think consensus is fine, that could be forwarded to staff. Sorry, that could, that staff could take to council when the item is presented. Is probably sufficient. In terms of the plan, I was not here, but I have heard there seems to be a lot of interest in, you know, having a plan for that area. One thing to keep in mind is plans take time for review and approval. And a lot of, you know, with these housing projects, they come in and they may come in and apply. And we can't keep them from applying. And applications may come in before that plan is approved. So then those projects would not be subject to the plan. So it's, it's kind of a timing thing. You have to get the plan in place and have it adopted before a, a project comes in to be subject to it.
So I'll just state that I'm also concerned that we had an east plan that was in development and then it was stopped, it was put on hold. I don't think, as far as I know, it was officially ended, it just kind of went into limbo land. And then when we were discussing the housing element, I remember at the city council level, there was a discussion about whether we should be focused on infill projects or doing a east plan, reviving the east plan and potentially having a bigger housing project on the east side of Pleasanton. And at that time, the decision was not to pursue the east plan or revive it. But given that, I feel that we then put it on hold and the applicants then applied for projects in the county. And so they gained some leverage in that process with the city. And so now we're kind of scrambling to figure out whether or not it's better to incorporate or not incorporate. But given that, I support what everybody else has said in that the planning commission would be interested in reviving the east plan or in creating a new plan to, to, to better understand the future of East Pleasanton and how it fits into the overall city.
And one more thing just to remember, even if a plan isn't in place at the time projects are applied for, if those projects need a development agreement, that is a, a point of negotiation that gives the city some leverage to negotiate its position and what it wants and things that it may want, may have wanted in a plan. So we, we have tools. We may not have a plan in place for every project in East Pleasanton, but hopefully there will be a development agreement that provides some assurance for the city.
Okay. And so Commissioner Jane, does that meet your needs? Or would you like to restate it in your words, just to make sure we're communicating the right message here?
I, I think I would just like city council to consider, rather than a patchwork solution, a comprehensive solution for East Pleasanton.
And that the planning commission is supportive of that idea?
Because now it's two projects, you know, like five more come and, you know, then 10 more will come.
We'll be wishing we did it in five years.
Yeah, so, so it's like, the longer you wait, the longer you have, like, the sooner you're gonna lose control. It's like not having a plan is probably not the best plan.
Well, good, we have consensus. Any final comments or items before we adjourn? Okay, thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.